The Tuesday, March 8th, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, which is generally the first and the third Tuesdays of each month, we have a period of time called open podium when members of the community can address the city council on issues related to city business. This portion of the meeting is from approximately 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers, and if you wish to speak to us at that time, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and your subject matter. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are completed, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Again, these portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. If you have any questions, again, please contact the city manager's office. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add or delete? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, February 16th, 2016?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'd like a motion for approval of the city council meeting minutes held that same date, Tuesday, February 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Consent calendar. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections or questions or anything to pull? Mr. Getchell.
Yes, Mayor. Two corrections. One would be item H is a public hearing, so we move that to the fourth public hearing of the night. That needs to, the project is still the same, but it requires a public hearing, so we'll cover that, a public hearing, removing that. And then item C, the shops at Southwest Station, between the packet being prepared in this evening, there were, there was a revision made to the ordinance, the second reading of the ordinance, and the resolution for site plan, and that was to change the expiration date of those actions from April 15th to May 17th. So the only change on the documents on that item, the consent agenda, would be the expiration dates.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Anything else to pull or discuss? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Our first public hearing today is 2016 CDBG funds. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On an annual basis, the city receives dollars through the Community Development Block Grant Program from the federal government. We then allocate those dollars to many different programs, actually quite the majority of which are our own housing rehabilitation rehab programs that we administer and other housing programs. But we also provide funds to local agencies that provide human service activities for the residents in our community, and we need to hold a public hearing to disseminate those funds. We have an allocation of $210,636, and we allocate a large portion of that, as I mentioned, $210,000 of that allocation is toward housing activities and projects with the city, and then the remaining $53,000, at least as proposed this year, are to PROP, proposed to be to PROP for their housing services program, and also to PROP for their emergency vehicle repair program. And then an allocation to HOME, that's the household and outside maintenance program for the elderly that we work with, and finally to the YMCA for a childcare subsidy. And again, this is something that we do annually. We conduct a public hearing, and then the council passes a resolution approving the use of the funds that were recommended by a committee, a committee that works with city staff and then recommends to the city council what those allocations are. And you do have on your desk to be entered into the public hearing record a statement from the YMCA discussing their appreciation for potentially receiving the dollars and then the programs that they would work on as it relates to the services that they provide in childcare. So that would be entered into the public hearing record as well because they submitted that and someone is not here, present at the public hearing. So the staff is here to answer any questions that you may have following the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody from the audience that wants to address the council on the CDBG funds? Okay. You'd come up and state your name and organization for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Jenny Backland. I'm the program director for People Reaching Out to People, PROP, based in Eden Prairie, where the community's food shelf and emergency service agency for low-income families. Our key focus area is to help families in crisis and at risk of homelessness attain stability and eventually self-sufficiency. And we've had the privilege of working in partnership with the city of Eden Prairie in making this a reality, and are deeply appreciative of the ongoing and consistent support and funds that the city has provided over the years to allow us to serve our clients. This past year, over 1,100 families used the food shelf, emergency financial and wraparound services, and we were able to provide 70 homelessness prevention services, rent and mortgage cover. Twenty of these were directly recipients of CDBG-specific funds administered by the city. A key challenge in the suburbs is reliable transportation, and most of our clients need a car to get to work. We're delighted that in addition to potentially receiving $22,000 in housing funds for the 2016-2017 cycle, the city may award us the opportunity to manage the Eden Prairie Car Repair Program. Having this program in our committee, in our community, will help streamline the process in delivering these services to our clients. And benefits for low-income families will be the ease in economy of local access and a one-stop space for receiving coordinated financial assistance, including transportation, food, utilities, and other emergency financial services. Clients will also get immediate access to PROP's wraparound pathway services, our employment counseling, and financial mentoring. Thank you for considering and trusting both of these funding streams to us this grant cycle.
Thank you, Jenny.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Do great work.
Great work.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Anybody else that wants to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for letting me come today. I'm Valerie Anderson with Senior Community Services, representing the HOME program tonight. I am a program coordinator with that program, and as you're aware, things are changing in the CHOR program or senior services arena. Many agencies over the past few years have had to close their doors due to lack of funding and issues of that nature, and there's a lot of services needed for home maintenance for seniors, including the services we offer, our mowing, snow shoveling, painting, yard work, and homemaking services. So we've expanded four times in the last few years because of other programs closing their doors. So we want to thank you for the support that you give to the HOME program and to the seniors in the community. Another change is the growing number of seniors in the state of Minnesota and the entire country. According to the Pew Research Center, 10,000 people in the United States are turning 65 every day now, due to the baby boomers turning age 65 and older, and this trend will continue for the next 14 years. So that being said, our services are going to be in a higher demand than they already have been. So this year, we helped 33 Eden Prairie seniors with over 600 hours of service, and 100 of these hours were performed by our wonderful volunteers. We have volunteers that come from all over the metro area, local groups that give their time and talents to help the seniors in need. And some of the local Eden Prairie groups I wanted to mention tonight were Optum Marketing, St. Andrews Church, and Grace Church. So volunteers truly are the backbone of our organization, and between the funding and the volunteers, we're able to keep our programs in place for the seniors in Eden Prairie. We'll continue to do outreach efforts with advertising partnerships, expos and fairs in the city of Eden Prairie. And I'd like to close this evening by sharing a story from one of our seniors. Shirley is a 78-year-old woman that retired, and she was living in Florida. She retired from Minnesota and moved to Florida, but due to health issues that ultimately caused her to suffer financially, and she needed to move back to Minnesota recently to be near her daughter. She was very concerned about everything, but she was able to obtain subsidized housing here in Eden Prairie, and because she's unable physically to keep up her home and do laundry, she met with one of our social workers, and we assigned housekeeping services to her that she could afford. She just said the transition's been very difficult, but that we helped her remain in her home with dignity, and she wanted to thank us for that and you. So HOME helps seniors stay at home where they want to be, where it's more cost-effective, affordable, and they feel safe with workers that have been screened. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about what we do for the seniors of Eden Prairie. And did anyone have any questions?
It's a wonderful service, though. And you're right, the need is going to be increasing.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to address the council on this? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the use of 2016 CDBG funds as recommended by the Eden Prairie Human Services Committee.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Our next public hearing is for Starbucks and BP station up on West 62nd Street. Mr. Getchell.
Yes, Mayor and Council. West 62nd Street, Starbucks and BP station before you is a resolution for a guide plan change, a PUD concept review with waivers and district review, a zoning district change and a resolution for preliminary plat. The project proposed tonight is for the construction of a 2,000-square-foot Starbucks with a drive-thru, and a relocation and reconstruction of the car wash facility that's at the existing BP station. You may recall that this property was part of a small annexation the city of Eden Prairie made this past year, and at that time, the guide plan and zoning was established that would most closely resemble the property that existed while under the jurisdiction of Minnetoka, with the requirement at the time of development that the guide plan change and zoning would be, that would be sought, would be consistent with the proposed development. This project is seeking PUD waivers, there's actually three. Two of them deal basically with the existing conditions at the BP site relating to the parking stall size and the peaked roof requirement we have for convenience store and gas stations, and then the third one deals with a setback, a front yard setback along 62nd that affects a portion, I believe it's to the east of the proposed Starbucks. The project proponent is here tonight to provide you with an overview, and the project proponent and city staff will then be able to answer any questions you may have during the public hearing or after.
Okay. Thank you. Is a proponent here?
Maybe I can mention as they come forward, too, that the Planning Commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the project at their February 8th meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Anderson, president of Architectural Consortium, and with me, we also have the civil engineer with us. We're excited about this project. It's a rather complicated site due to, you know, existing conditions, a triangular odd-shaped configuration, and, but we are excited to deliver a brand-new Starbucks. We think architecturally, tying both the improvements, enhancements, we're doing to the new car wash and the gas station with the Starbucks architecture. And so in general, I think we had some very good discussion with Planning Commission, and I'm really here for questions.
I do have a question. You have some great renditions of what this is going to look like.
Thank you.
Specifically this one, and I'm wondering, is this a pretty accurate representation of what the landscape plan is?
It is. It's an illustration based on the landscape plan. It's obviously at somewhat of maturity of the plantings, but it is true to the landscape plan.
Okay. And will there be a bike rack?
Yes.
Okay. Where is that located?
That on the site plan, I believe, is indicated by the patio.
It's by the patio, okay.
At the Starbucks.
All right. I think that this-
Could we get these pictures up so that people watching at home could see them over on?
I don't know. I don't have them, so. So I think that this Starbucks is going to get a lot of use, particularly when the light rail station goes in, and that's why I'm really concerned about the bike rack, because I think there'll be people biking to the light rail station, bringing their bike onboard the trains, and they might want to stop at Starbucks, so it would be great.
I agree, and I think the connectivity we've done with the sidewalks to future trails and such will be a great way to get there, too.
Okay. Any other questions for the proponent? Yeah. Councilmember, what's your?
Put the overhead on, too.
Camera?
There we go.
I think just with Optum being there now, too, I mean, that's like, you know, a lot, a large population of people that would potentially want to see a Starbucks in here, so it's going to probably be a very busy site.
Okay. While we're waiting for this to pull up.
It's on.
Oh, it is up. Okay. All right. Is there anybody from the audience that wants to address the council on this Starbucks? Okay.
So seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for guide plan change from low-density residential to regional commercial on .44 acres, and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 1.38 acres, and approve first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district change from R-1-13.5 to highway commercial .44 acres, and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat for three lots into two lots on 1.38 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. It looks like a great project. It's going to fit in beautifully in that area. Thank you. Opt-in PUD amendment is our third public hearing. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, you have a request for an ordinance for a PUD district review with waivers and a zoning district amendment. This is on the approximate 90 acres on Technology Drive, just east of here. The project is proposing to construct two surface parking lots to support additional employees that will be added to this campus. The north parking area will include 121 stalls and is proposed to be permanent. The south lot proposes 335 stalls and is proposed to be temporary. Based on the temporary nature of that particular lot, the staff is including conditions upon the removal of that lot. There are three conditions. You can see that in the packet that are related to if UHG terminates its lease at that location, vacates a facility, or if the property to the west is developed, then the surface parking would be converted into structured parking. There is a waiver that is being sought to allow for off-street parking, and the applicant is here tonight to provide a brief presentation and to answer any questions that you may have regarding this project. Staff is also able to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council, city staff. My name is Dave Palner. I'm with United Health Group. Happy to be here to talk a little bit more about the project directed. Mr. Getchell did an excellent job providing a summary. I did have a couple slides. Are we able to put those up on the screen or not? No?
You meant a PowerPoint?
Yeah, I had a PowerPoint, but that's... There we go. Perfect. So the couple of the complexities with the site, it's a 90-acre parcel. The westerlymost portion, which is approximately 36 acres, is owned by United Health Group. The easterlymost portion is owned by Angelo Gordon, and that's approximately 54 acres. And that's the site that the current building resides on, which is a three-story, three building, 478,000-square-foot facility that we are a tenant in. We're the sole tenant in this facility. We are in the process and just finishing up a major renovation of buildings A and B in that facility to increase the density and to be able to house our Optum Technology Group, so this will be the flagship location for Optum Technology Organization. On the screen now is the proposal, and as Mr. Getchell explained, the south parking lot is intended to be temporary in nature, and that's 335 stalls. The intent for temporary basis is we may develop the site further at some point in the future, and there is a PUD that exists to be able to accommodate that. If and when we decide to do that, we would intend on migrating that, removing that surface parking lot and migrating that parking into a structured parking ramp that would support the office development that would occur there. The north parcel, the 121 stalls, is proposed to be permanent, a permanent addition to that existing structure. They're all total of 456 stalls. So we are in the process of completing our renovation and moving in the Optum Technology team, and that process will be complete in approximately two weeks. So we're looking for your support for this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? I'm pleased to see that you did look at the possibility of doing previous pavement for the-
We did.
...temporary site, but it just didn't work.
It did not, it did not work in the sense of the soil conditions on the site are very clay-based, so to be able to really allow the proper infiltration, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work effective. The idea with porous pavement is to be, to allow the surface water to be, to soak in and slowly infiltrate the site, but due to the nature of the soils, it really wouldn't accomplish that. I guess one of the, one of the benefits is either way we look at it, all the rainwater that will hit that site will remain on that site in a stormwater retention pond, so it will not go into the wetlands. It will work its way through infiltration through the existing pond.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this proposal?
Seeing none, I would close the public hearing and approve first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district amendment within the I-5 zoning district on 89.63 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. One of the concerns that we sometimes run into when a parking structure is going close to a property line is the issue of light scatter from parking lighting, and my understanding is that this, this is low lights, and there'll be absolutely no spinoff or overflow of light past the property line.
Your honor, council members, I recall that question came up at the Planning Commission from a resident, and the answer was yes, that it would meet all of our requirements for shielding the light from the adjacent residential and property lines.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to our third public hearing, which is a resolution approving support of the Minnesota Investment Fund application in connection with Climatek. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're bringing forward what we think is good news. It's related to a new business locating in Eden Prairie. The Climatek business, which is currently located in Hopkins, is proposing to move to 6950 Washington Avenue in Eden Prairie, and then to spend $1.3 million to renovate their building at that location and to purchase new equipment to help offset those costs. They are applying to the State Department of Employment and Economic Development's Minnesota Investment Fund program to, and I do have an update on, I think the packet had said a $480,000 forgivable loan. It's my understanding that it's a $370,000 loan, actually $270,000 of it will be a loan with 2% interest, and another $100,000 would be forgivable over a period of time, so it would be a grant if they stay in that location over time. So that's, that's a recent update that I received. So this program, and we've, we've been a conduit for similar programs in the past. You may remember the Rosemount, the Emerson Rosemount, that very large expansion they did. This program requires the city to be a conduit and to host a public hearing on behalf of the application, and that the city would enter into an agreement with the state of Minnesota, but the city is not in any way paying for or obligated or tied to the responsibilities related to the project, where the local government entity that would support that and then would host a public hearing for that project. And that's what we're doing this evening. Climatek is 100% employee-owned-based business that manufactures plastic extrusions and fabricates other plastic materials. They hope to not only, upon relocating to Eden Prairie, they hope to also grow their employment by at least 20 to 30 jobs, because there is a requirement associated with these state programs that you add jobs when it's tied to these loan programs. So tonight, we're asking that you host a public hearing and then consider adopting the resolution supporting this application for this program. And I believe representatives of Climatek are here tonight. There they are in the audience. They can answer any questions that you have, as well as city staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Getchell. Is there anybody from the audience that wants to address this support for the Climatek application? Okay. Is there a motion?
I've got a question.
Okay. You've got a question. Go ahead.
Is this a clean tech-type industry? You know, low pollution level?
Yes. So I would say the applicant would best answer that, and if the audience didn't hear that, the answer was yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion?
Close the public hearing and adopt the resolution authorizing the Department of Economic, Employment and Economic Development, DED, for a 480...
370.
No. I think says...
Wasn't it changed to 370?
It was, Mayor, so...
Sorry, I forgot. Wrong amount in my...
Yes.
That's okay. That was their application versus what DED is.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So it is 480 or 370?
The application was for 480. It's up together.
Okay.
So it's okay to read that motion, Councilmember Nelson.
Sorry. Sorry about that, Councilmember Nelson.
For a $480,000 forgivable loan to Climatek through DED's Minnesota Investment Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Great. Thank you for coming to Eden Prairie.
Welcome to Eden Prairie. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens? Aye. Next item is appointments to our 2016 city commissions, and we recently did interviews. On Tuesday, February 23rd, we had some wonderful applicants for our boards and commissions, and we're going to make some of those appointments tonight. Is there anything you want to add to that, Mr. Getchell?
Mayor, I think you covered that. We received 22 applications, seven new applicants, and 15 applying for reappointment. All the terms will begin on April 1st, and we will have an orientation session with the new commissioners on Wednesday, March 23rd, and I think, as you had mentioned, we were able to receive a number of applications for all of our commissions to a point where you're able to take action tonight to almost fully seat all of our boards and commissions.
Okay. Great. Councilmember Nelson, why don't you start with Conservation Commission?
I'll move to appoint to the Conservation Commission Michael Bennett and Ashley Young with terms ending March 31st, 2019.
And appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission Daniel Keely with a term ending March 31st, 2019.
And appoint to the Heritage Preservation Commission Valerie Ross and Pamela Sparrow with terms ending March 31st, 2019.
And appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Sana Lassar, Joan Howe-Pulis, Anna Martinka, Shram Misagi, and Leslie F... Anna Martinka, Shram Misagi, and Leslie Philimon with terms ending March 31st, 2019.
And appoint to the Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources Commission Don Jacobson, Deb McBride, Matt Pelosi, and Kirk Spresser with terms ending March 31st, 2019, and Larry Link with a term ending March 31st, 2018.
And appoint to the Planning Commission Mark Freiberg, Ann Higgins, and Tom Poole with terms ending March 31st, 2019.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you to all of the applicants for these commissions. As I had said previously, again, we had great applications, pardon me, great applicants this year, and I hope that if people didn't get appointed to a commission, that they do consider doing that again next year. The other thing we need to do next is to appoint commission chairs and vice chairs. Let's see. Kathy, do you want to start?
Appoint Lyndon Marquist Chair and Ed O'Connor Vice Chair of the Board of Appeal and Equalization.
And appoint Lori Tritt Chair and Amanda Anderson Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission.
And appoint Steve Olson Chair and Tara Kalar Vice Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission.
And appoint PG Narayan Chair and Sandra Lassar Vice Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission.
And appoint Larry Link Chair and Deb McBride Vice Chair of the Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources Commission.
And appoint John Stoltz Chair and Andrew Piper Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there any other business to bring before the council tonight? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Sorry, Gina. A little off.